And I think Tom is not going to be here this week. He mentioned at the last meeting. I'm pretty sure I heard him say I won't be here next week, so. Um, I think we should begin, so um, I'll call the order and declare a quorum. And our first item of business is public comment. And seeing no one here or online. We'll consider the approval of the meeting minutes from July 2nd. Does anybody have any questions for that?
Would like to abstain if I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Well, you also had.
Real quick on minutes.
A few. Technical difficulties, so if there's anybody that sees anything wrong with.
Uh, yeah, my last name is spelled wrong throughout, but other than that, substantively, it's fine. It should be R instead of O R. Mind if we wait to know? It's okay. Other than that, the minutes looked great. You did a fantastic job subscribing them from memory.
All right, so with the changes to. Oh, it's around here, too.
Yeah, throughout.
Yeah, yeah, right. Okay.
At least it's consistent. Yeah.
The change, with the exception of the change of Andy's name to the correction. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, good. I'm assuming Sam isn't here. Oh, okay. I didn't see it, sorry. And then all those. And one abstain. Okay, so um, the next, uh, yeah, thank you, Andy. Getting a little background noise. Um, the next we have Matthew Miller CPA to present. On um, the audit findings. Can you pin him to the, to the front? Okay, let's see.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, everybody. It's good to be here. So we are here to cover your 2023 audit report. Um, so I like to kind of give everybody an overview of what the actual audit process is. And then we can run through the two reports that we issue. Um, so we break the audit process down into three main parts. So planning, fieldwork, and then reporting. Um, ultimately, reporting is what you're looking for from us, and that's what we're here to do today. Uh, in order to get to the point where we can issue those two reports, we start with planning. So before that even starts, we ascend what's called an engagement organizer. Um, to the library staff and they upload documents to that. Uh, so they uploaded probably about a hundred different things. Um, to us this year, obviously being first year, we look for a lot more organizational documents and things like that. Um, but we're still looking for primarily financial information. And so when we're doing planning, we basically import your entire database of transactions into our software. So we take your general ledger detail um, and, and plug that in. And then really this year, because we don't have a previous year to kind of compare anything to. Um, we really based it off of your budget. So we compared your actual to your budget. So what you plan to happen versus what actually happened. Um, really, in reality, the budget was a pretty conservative estimate. Um, you came in quite a bit under in a lot of categories. Uh, so we really dove kind of deep into the general ledger transactions themselves to see basically where most of the money went. Um, and to give you an idea of really the focus of our audit for something like a library district. Um, obviously, we definitely check revenues, but we're primarily looking at what's going out the door just because property tax money coming in is very safe. Um, so that's really where we spent a lot of the time on planning. And then we do read all of your meeting minutes to see what. Uh, you know, is really going on with the board um, and at the library district. And that really helps us kind of aim our fieldwork. Uh, and so fieldwork is what I think people really think of as an audit. That's where we're going through your bank statements. Um, we're looking through agreements. We look at uh, purchases that were made. You know, we want to see where they were coded. Do they seem to be accurate? Um, does it seem like a reasonable expense of the district? Uh, and then the final kind of aspect of that was um, kind of developing a few. First year items. So we came up with some capital assets, things that needed to be capitalized. Uh, and then we did a search for um, kind of the two main things that are new in accounting, which would be leasing standards. And then the subscription-based information technology arrangements. Um, and so we did identify a couple of those to record. Uh, but those are brand new for this year. Um. And so then, once we're done with all of that, we put together the two reports. So I'm happy to run through those reports, but if there's any questions on kind of the actual audit process itself, we're, we're happy to, I'm happy to discuss that. Yep, I see somebody with their hand up.
Yeah, this is, this is Sylvia. Um, so this is a little different than what I'm used to seeing because I work a lot with a lot of like. Other types of governmental entities. And when I see audits, I usually see things like. Concerns, like if there's a particular um. Practice that isn't being complied with or followed. So that might be noted as a concern, or if something is really egregiously wrong, there might be what they call a finding. Um, because something is not being properly followed. So I'm wondering, is that, I, I mean, is the, the audit that you have, that you have for us, is that what I should expect going forward? I mean, will, will there be analysis of whether or not the procedures that are in place for accounting are being followed?
Yep. So that's part of the, of the reports that we issue. So we issued the two reports, as I mentioned. One of them is the opinion itself on the financial statements. And then the second one is called the governing board letter, and that's really more or less a report card to you as the board. Um, for how the audit went and anything that we uh, came across. And so we did actually have one small recommendation for you this year. Um, but I guess I would like to s- say we focused on 2023. Uh, the, the report is actually restricted to findings for 2023. We can't report issues for next year. Um, and so that's really all that, that you're going to see in there. And I guess keep in mind, very little transactions were done. You didn't have any employees. Um, so kind of small year from that standpoint. Um, and then the other part that you mentioned was related to findings. Uh, that's a little bit more down the lines of federal money. Um, and a single audit, those would be reportable findings. That's actually a very, very detailed process over like one cycle of transaction. Uh, you won't be subject to that, at least for the foreseeable future. Okay, so we'll start with the audit report itself. Um, so the audit report is broken down into sections A through E. It's a pretty straightforward audit report. Um, so section A is the independent auditor's opinion. So that's our opinion on the financial statements themselves. You received an unmodified opinion. That's. A clean audit opinion, exactly what you want. Um, section B is what's called management's discussion and analysis. For 2023, it's not necessarily as useful as it will be moving forward. Uh, this section is really a high level overview of the district, and it's supposed to be presented on a comparative basis, but there is no. Information from 2022 to compare to this year. Um, so that's just some general discussion about the financials themselves. And then section C is where the actual audited financial statements begin. Uh, like any government, you present two levels of financial statements. So one of them is the fund level. That's your general fund. And then the other one is what's called government-wide. And so that's consolidated. Um, if you had other funds, they would be consolidated into one. You do just have the one fund. And so the real main difference is. Anything long-term is not reported on your general fund. That's only in this, in the government-wide fund, financials. And then you do also report a component unit, which is the library foundation. Um, what essentially makes up a component unit is a legally separate entity that basically exists only for kind of your benefit.
This, this column, component unit is basically means the library foundation.
Yep, so they sent us their audit report, and so it blended into here.
Okay.
Um, just a few highlights. Uh, so as far as how the year ended, you ended with positive fund balance in that position in all the categories. Um, I'm sure you expected uh, nothing different, but that's, you know, a pretty good sign there. Um, as far as where you ended the year, you had about 5.2 million in fund balance for the general fund. Um, it'll be hard to kind of gauge where you're at for a couple of years, but. Kind of the best metric, once you're up and running, that we like to compare is what is your ending fund balance versus your annual operating expenses? So how long could you potentially operate? Um, to give you kind of a. A breakdown for libraries, I guess. Libraries tend to have quite a bit of money on hand. So typically, that fund balance will make up. Um, somewhere between uh, seven or eight months worth of expenditures, expenditures, all the way up to. Um, some of our libraries have like two and a half years' worth of money on hand, so. Uh, they tend to be pretty well-funded versus, say, a municipality or something like that. Um, overall, for the year, you had a net income of about 5.9 million. Um, I know that the IGA ended up coming in quite a bit under budget, which is really. Probably the main driver of that. Um, and then section D are the footnotes to the financial statements. So that's everything that's kind of behind the numbers. Um, there's explanations in there of the difference between kind of the general fund, which is more or less your operating fund versus everything else that's reported. Um, you'll see kind of significant accounting policies listed in there. There is details on what kind of cash and investments you have at year end. Um, what kind of capital assets you're holding. And then you do have a subscription-based technology agreement. It's. Uh, basically your network infrastructure. Um, it's not something that you're owning. You're in essence leasing it. Um, and so that's a brand-new accounting standard that just came into effect for 2023. That represents more, a little over half of what your capital assets were at the end of 2023. And then there's a disclosure about uh, the IGA with Boulder and what you're paying them for over the next, um, I guess over two years. And then the final part of the report is the budget-to-actual presentation. So that shows what you budgeted versus what actually happened. Um, in future years, there will be a comparative prior year presented as well. Are there any questions on the audit report itself?
Um, could I ask, like, legal counsel, since you've probably seen more of these than we have, like, do you, did you see anything here that?
No, I'll typically review the, the report and especially the footnotes, and there is nothing there. Particularly since we're talking about 2023, next year, there may be more.
And then Matthew, I just wondered, Vanita Duran, um, I just wondered if um. You tell us, um, how many library districts do you work with or represent?
Um, I think we work with uh, more than 10. Um, but.
In Colorado?
Yes, all in Colorado.
Okay.
And uh, so, so you know, we're located in Avon, um, kind of by. And so we primarily audit library districts that would be in this area. So. Um, basically from our county, Eagle County, all the way over to Mesa County, we audit all of those down towards Gunnison, up towards Steamboat.
Okay, I just, I, I knew you had a background in that area. I just didn't, I was wondering about how many. So, thanks.
Yep. And then um, as a firm, we work primarily with local governments, but I work uh, probably 95% with special districts. Which is how you're operating.
But we're not.
We are not as special, but he knows that.
I think you're misremembering this, and maybe I'm confusing it with something else, but weren't we talking about how there would be meetings with the Board of Trustees? Related to the audit?
Yeah.
Did, did anyone have those meetings? Because I, no one said anything to me.
No.
Did you receive an email?
No.
Asking some questions?
No, no.
They did reach out to me.
Okay, I, I guess I thought that that would have been a for, across the board.
I mean, my, the email to me just said, did, did you have any? Um, I thought it was like a BCC email that said, we're, we're from the auditing firm. Did you have any um? Issues or things you wanted to bring up?
Okay, maybe I just missed it. I don't.
I didn't get it. I didn't get an email.
Yeah, I mean, did you just reach out to one person?
Yes, we typically send it to either the president or the treasurer or both of them. We don't typically send it to every one of them. Um, but we're happy to do that if you prefer. Uh, and then it's kind of hit or miss with our clients, but. Um, some of our clients form an audit committee, so it would be several board members, and they would meet with, with us separately. Um, and then we kind of dive deeper into the audit, anything that came up, stuff that we did. And this process will become a lot more involved moving forward. Once you have employees, your employees are actually purchasing. Your collection and things like that. The volume of transactions that we look at will bump up dramatically. And um, I guess in my experience, inevitably, something will come up that. You know, for discussion, whether um, people are paying sales tax on their credit card or purchase card or something like that. Uh, stuff does come up. Again, this goes back to, this was a pretty straightforward year. There really were not that many transactions for us to look at.
Yeah, I, I guess going forward, we should. Make sure that go, for future years, there will be, you know, we will want to be a little bit more. Involved and a little bit more knowledgeable. Maybe the finance committee at a, at a bare minimum is meeting with them before it comes to us.
Yeah.
Um, I, yeah.
So. Um.
That was my expectation as well, Sylvia, but I just sort of shined it because of what he just said.
Yeah, 2023 is, you know.
So going forward, I would, yeah, I think every board member should be contacted. I think there should be at least the finance committee or an audit committee.
I would expect it's probably going to be a more lengthy process in 2020, for 2024. Probably will take a little bit more time and, because you are purchasing stuff. And, and maybe we do form an audit committee. We can look at it.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I'm not opposed to that if you guys want to do that. I mean, um, and.
So Matthew, what does that process look like for you? When does that start? For 2024?
So that will be, well, I guess that's up to the district when you want to schedule your audit this year. I think the plan was to schedule it pretty much as late as you could. Um, in order to get it done before the state deadline, but uh, we pretty much start auditing our calendar year-end clients in February. Um, that's, that would be kind of on the early side for more small clients. And then uh, the bulk of our, you know, more medium or larger clients are more like March and April. And then that gives you plenty of time to schedule audit committee meeting. Um, if they want us to come and present to the board meeting, uh, sometimes we do both. Uh, sometimes the audit committee will just present that they met with the auditors and that. They're comfortable moving forward. Uh, it's really up to how the district wants to do it. And to give you kind of the most, um, I guess intense example, uh, Mesa County Library actually has an audit planning meeting with us. Before we actually do the audit, and then we have an audit committee meeting, and then they have us come to the board meeting as well.
So how about we put on the schedule to. Form, if, if we, or look at forming an audit committee in January and then engaging with an auditor, whether it's this firm. I, I don't know, when do we hire? Them, did we hire them at the beginning of the year sometime, I thought? Or, or maybe last year? So whatever we, you know, and then um. This audit committee can look at what they want to. You know, they could talk to the auditors and see what, you know, you can get the information they want, like, whatever you want.
But you do care.
No, I, I very much care, very much care about. What I mean is, like, I have no, I, whatever you want to ask for, the, the curtain is open and the cabinets are open. That's what I meant by that.
I, yeah, I mean, just thinking about, you know, this is a lot of money and.
Right, no.
The, the citizens are expecting us to really be careful.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's not that I think that anything is wrong. I, I, I think it's the exact opposite, but it's just nice to say, yes, we did our due diligence.
Right.
We're watching, and I mean.
It's just making the systems in place, right?
Absolutely. And I mean, I, it might be nice to have a conversation about, like, the planning meeting that you were talking about. That seems like that could be. You know, kind of helpful to kind of help to guide us or brainstorm what we would want to do. Um, so my questions are not about, you know, I'm not, it's just, I'm trying to unpack how we're going to make this.
Well, we're also. We're also sort of, one of the things I talked to David about yesterday was, you know, eventually also training for us as a board. On how to, you know, and we haven't really landed on what a financial statement looks like. And so, and we, we've kind of, I mean, we, we're getting there, but like. How to read the financial statements and what these mean, because these numbers, you know, are really high and. And it's because we have a bunch of things going on, um, a lot of revenue coming in and not a ton coming out. We're paying now 11 million back to the county, so. That would be something we'd probably look to doing in the fall. In this case, these numbers were, if I'm, will probably be audited twice, right? So the city, since all the accounts and every, the purchase cards and most of that was, was, was funded by the city last year. And the contracts were contracted by the city for a, for a lot of them. Um. Those things will be audited by the city and then to the extent that Matthew and his team also audited them, so they, it's kind of a double whammy in this case.
That's a good point. We can add to the annual administrative resolution that you do in January. Remember that long list of things? Um, the appointment of an audit committee. And we'll just put blanks in there for whoever you want to appoint, and that way it'll come up every January, your first meeting.
What is our deadline to file our audit each year with the state?
You have until.
By 31st.
By 30, okay, end of July.
Yeah, I, I personally felt like we cut it a little close this year, and that's my personal opinion. Um, but um. Only because like, if we had any comments or anything, we wouldn't have a meet, we'd have to schedule another meeting and. And, you know, to, to get it done, because I don't think we can ask for a waiver. So like.
Can, but.
Okay, I, but I didn't know, I didn't think we could this year for some reason, because we asked for one last year or something, so um, so.
Yeah, doing it a little bit earlier would be nice, again, just to your point. So if we did have a concern, we'd have time to address it prior to having to send to the state. All things to address next time around. Um, does this get posted publicly as well, then?
Yes, this is available on the state auditor's website, so every local government in Colorado is on there. Um, and then generally speaking, it would go on your website.
What was your minor finding I, uh, that you?
Book sales.
It's the point of sale system, okay.
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, so the point-of-sale system was really the only thing that came up. Um, next year, we will probably schedule what's called an interim audit. Um, which would be a few days where we would come and only look at controls, because you're going to have payroll. Uh, which is a big one, and I know it sounded like it was a long setup process. Um, so that's kind of, will be a huge area of focus, but then you also have lots and lots of P-card transactions that are going to be happening and way more disbursements. Um, and we like to walk around and kind of get a lay of the land, uh, maybe go talk to some people. Who are actually sitting at the front desks and things like that. So it will be quite a bit more of an involved process next year. And then the other, other item that's in that board letter, so to just back up real quick on that board letter, um, there's a couple of things that we're required to tell you. And that's essentially uh, what's called qualitative aspects of accounting policy. That's basically, again, what's behind the numbers. We have to tell you what the significant estimates are. Uh, um, depreciation on your capital assets is a significant estimate, because uh, you're estimating the useful lives on those. Um, you follow industry standards, so nothing unusual there. The second one. Uh, are there certain estimates involved with those subscription agreements? Um, you have to imply an interest rate. So basically, if you went out to get a loan, what interest rate would you pay? And then also, if there were optional terms to extend, we have to estimate whether it's more likely than not if you're going to do those. Um, so those are your major estimates for now. Moving forward, you will have pension liabilities in there because you're a member of para. Uh, that's a significant estimate that's done by someone else, but still reported in your financials. Um, and then the next three sections are pretty important, I think, for the board. Uh, difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We did not have any. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements. We posted a couple of journal entries, but a lot of it was kind of converting the long-term items, so we recorded that subscription. We helped you capitalize some assets. Um, that's not stuff I would consider to be a misstatement. Uh, I know you didn't have a lot of transactions, but at the end of the day, you don't want us to come in here and change your net income by $5 million. Because that means all the information that you were budgeting on all year um, was not accurate. So that's an important section, so we'll keep an eye on that one for future years. And then disagreements with management, we did not have any. Um, ultimately, everything went really smoothly from our side, so. Like I said, you kind of pushed it off until the last minute. Um, everything was uploaded to us around uh, June 15th. So that's a pretty quick turnaround for an audit. Um, generally speaking, the process is more like three months probably from kind of start to finish. Uh, so they get pushed through pretty quick this year. Um, the first recommendation was the point of sale, and then the second one is more or less an FYI. Once you kind of take over building your own infrastructure, um, governments are now allowed to take advantage of tax credits. That are inside the Inflation Reduction Act. So basically, even though you're a government, you can file a 990 and get a tax refund if you do. Any of the applicable activities. So if you um, purchase. Like electric vehicles, put in charging infrastructure, things like that, you can actually get money back. Um. So just keep that in mind.
This year, we should get some money back. Then. And then we should put in a charging station. We did. Yeah, so we should make sure we record those costs and get our money back.
You know, that.
If you need more information on that, um, we, I can send you some more.
I was just going to mention that, that point-of-sale issue not only relates to sales, but it says cafe sales.
Yes, yeah.
I just note that.
Yeah. We, we, I'm.
Yeah.
It's, it's no good for the audit, but we uh. We didn't look into another system and then just didn't work. We scrapped it and went field.
It's, I'm sorry, what?
Cafe, we, we started to implement a new system, but then we. You know, struggled with the vendor and we still, we didn't have the equipment, but yeah. So uh, worth, worth investigating.
Um, so the mid-year kind of thing, so we're, we're halfway or over halfway through 2024. Are you going to? The mid-year, are you going to do in this calendar year, or are you going to start that at the beginning of next year, or? Um.
Uh, are you saying the interim audit?
Yeah, the interim.
Uh, we can schedule that with the district whenever they want. I think kind of the typical timeframe that um. I guess is maybe easiest for us is generally around November.
Okay.
And uh, to give you a little more information on that, the internal controls, so we don't give an opinion on those. But we do gain an understanding of them and then perform walkthroughs on those. And sometimes we like to do that before year-end, because if there's anything significant that we find, it gives you an opportunity to make a correction before year-end. Um, and then we can report that it's been resolved. So we try to, to get that done in advance, because it's better for us to present recommendations that have already been resolved to the board rather than. Uh, hey, this existed for the last year and a half, and we're just getting to you now.
All right, can you guys do that?
Oh, just a quick question, like, the, the idea of what's material, Matt, is that just subjective? Or do you have like a dollar threshold at which you say, oh, this is significant enough? To consider materiality or whatever the word would be?
Yeah, so materiality, I guess, is a standard calculation across all audits. Um, and then ultimately, I guess, how it's applied is based on our judgment. So ultimately, there's kind of a threshold. Of what is as a material transaction, and then we usually use 75% of that as far as our performance materiality, so. We would consider it, it would have to get fixed if it was even near that 75%. But um, when we're talking about different categories of transactions, let's say we recalculated depreciation different than you. That's an estimate already, so we would apply materiality to the max on that. If something with cash is wrong, we're going to drill into it pretty much down to. Uh, I mean, a minimal threshold. If it's a thousand bucks off, we're going to try to figure out what it is.
Thanks.
But then for, I, I had a question, just in terms of like. Um, two of our most significant uh, risk areas, we outsourced. One is the ILS, which is the. Database that holds all the patron information is outsourced to the Western State, and then our, now our IT as well, which is outsourced to an independent company. So what, what process, or is there any process by which your firm analyzes that risk? Or is that something that you just leave us?
So for anything that's helping you with a financial transaction, so like you are outsourcing, outsourcing your payroll processing. We get what's called a SOC report from them, and that's basic, that's an audit of their internal controls. And so we want to determine if they have, um, basically in good internal controls or not. If they do have good internal controls, so if they have an unmodified opinion on their, their SOC reports, then we would rely that, that they're, you know, doing it correctly. Obviously, we still make sure that you've recorded it correctly. We would double check setup because the setup would be on the library, um, but the actual transactions would be on them. Same thing with para, para gets a, a SOC audit because they're doing your retirement. Um, as far as your IT goes, we do have an IT questionnaire that we would contact them about. Um, and then we do look at what your insurance coverage is to make sure that you have cyber coverage and things like that. Um, and then a big focus of kind of the last few years, we look at your vendor management policy. Just because the risk of, um, the risk of kind of online or virtual transaction fraud has gone up dramatically the last couple of years. Uh, I'm sure you've seen, there's front range governments, uh, around you that have wired millions of dollars to bad vendors. Just because they didn't have a good policy for vendor update. Um, so that, I guess, expect that coming next year too. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
If you want to entertain a motion to accept the audit and authorize its filing, you can do that tonight and.
Is that all you need, Matt? Schedule another meeting.
Yeah, generally, the board will accept the audit and then also authorize management to sign the management representation letter. So what you have in your packet is a preliminary audit report. Um, before we can finalize, they have to sign that letter, which basically says, uh, everyone was honest with us. You're not hiding anything. You didn't get sued and no one wants to tell us about it.
Right. So that the two words are authorize the audit and.
Accept the audit and authorize the filing.
Accept the audit. Okay. So.
And approve the management letter.
Does anyone else have any more comments or question? Uh, my comment to, just to David and Jennifer is just like, let's, we'll, we'll probably, shoot for November for the, the next one. And so I don't know, we need to approve anything in like October to, to re-up our contract or, so whatever we have to do to get that scheduled for November. Um, okay. No more comments. Okay. So, um, I'm going to make a motion to accept the audit. And to authorize management to sign the letter and submit it to the state.
Second, that motion.
All right, all in favor? Kara is indicating yes, and so all opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Matt, will you file or do you want me to file?
We submitted it on your behalf and then I'll forward the confirmation.
Okay, we'll have to submit it to Dola too, which will take care.
Thanks for your help, Matt.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. It was good to be here.
Thank you. Will you send that to county or city in advance? Okay.
I think it's posted online if they want to get it.
I can make one comment before we leave. So, uh, we, the finance committee and I interviewed for this, uh, it was, it was tough finding an auditing, auditing company. This was really the only qualified auditing company that made it to the final. Uh, and we solicited, I think, uh, twelve. I don't remember how many, uh, firms I called, national firms, local firms, small firms, firms that did government entities. And, uh, there was one large national firm that kind of.
That's right.
But I think they were three times the cost. And, uh, and then we went with Matt, who had a lot of experience in districts. Most of the local people just said, no, I have too many clients already. So.
Not, yeah, we do remember that.
And I think that it'll be nice to rely on him to help us set up whatever processes that we want to put in place.
Well, so, yeah, we don't have to, we won't do tonight, right? But I, but the contract is such that we can renew it, uh, for three years. We can renew it again next year in Europe, that, uh, before we have to reconsider it.
Oh, okay. I what, I couldn't remember what, if it was like a one-year thing or, yeah, okay.
So it's one, one-year renewable contract.
Okay.
Can, can we renew two more?
And is the interim audit already included in the current contract or would that be part of the renewal? So is this interim audit in November already included in the current contract or would that be part of?
I think we'll probably have to get a new cost for that and stuff. My guess is, so I think, yeah, I just. Let's plan on doing that and getting the costs and bringing, I don't know if it has to come before the board.
The auditor worked for.
It works for us.
She works for the board.
Board, yeah.
Meaning most, because they, it looks, works for the board. To come to them, but it's under the threshold for spending.
Yeah, but you don't have to make a motion, you would like to continue with the same firm.
Yeah, right. If, hopefully, yeah. Okay, yeah, thanks. It's a new process for us and, um, sort of our first real audit after, and, and, um, although it's not a full audit because we weren't in control of the finances for the twenty twenty-three, but, um, I'm excited for, uh, twenty twenty-four. So much fun, these things and stuff. Yeah, but there's so many things that could, there's so many transactions, right? So, you know, catching someone that might, you know, nefarious employee, that does happen or accidental shipment to, you know, payment to somebody in Nigeria, those kind of things just happen all the time. And I can't, I know it's happened to the city, it's happened to the county. So, yeah, that's a good thing to, to do. Um, okay. So we're going to move on to library policies on the photography and video recording. We're like right on schedule. Sorry.
Pretty straightforward, will it be a cleanup?
Um, I had one question, you know, just related to the videoing is, um, I don't think it, this only, is this, if someone rents a room, not rents, but reserves a room, this wouldn't apply to the room if they, or do they have to have permission to video? I don't, I don't know if that is completely clear in here or.
The policy doesn't say you can't. I mean, the policy kind of says the opposite, right? It says it's treated like a public space.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the libraries, you know, waffle and try to strengthen this all, but really there's no. Your visages are protected in a quasi-public place. Unless you have some identifiable markings on your face, such as your driver's license tattooed on your face. Then your visage is a public and anybody can take pictures of it, including children, to be honest. And so it's not necessarily something we all love or think great, it's great, but it's, that's the way the law is, right? It's our, our policy reflects that.
Okay, any com, any other comments? All right, um, so I think we could move to, um, adopt the photo, photography and video policy recording policy.
Is that a motion or you ask?
I think we can. I will make a motion to adopt the photography and recording policy. All in favor? Yeah, thank you.
Hi.
Please don't nod. Yes, thank you. Um, uh, all opposed? There are being none. Um, the motion carries. Okay, the quarterly treasury and invest, uh, let's do, do you want to do treasury report first? Uh, Kara or Sam? I don't know who's in them.
We had it like six A, B, C, D.
Six A, B, C, D, yeah. So Q two financial statement? Do you have any comments about that or? Kara?
Yeah, no, we, um, we met with, um, finance, the finance committee met with Jennifer, uh, I guess a week or so ago. Um, and we, we talked through the, the statements, um, that you all have in the packet. And, um, I don't know if Jennifer had any color she wanted to include, but it, it felt like it was pretty straightforward. I think the, the high level takeaway is that the, um, you know, generally we're sort of under spending almost everywhere where we thought we would be spending, um, you know, almost across the board, I think, uh, and then the, the primary changes to the budget, I think, are the ones that we've discussed in recent meetings where we've talked about moving money um, into the capital fund. Um, and, and those are votes and things that we've already, we've already done and we've already discussed. But I think across the board, the, the big picture is that we budgeted more than we've spent so far. So we're at like less than fifty percent of expenditures, even though we're about halfway through the year. So I think that's probably a good thing and also just reflects the fact that we're not fully staffed up yet. We're not, um, you know, that we're, we're not at a hundred percent of where we will be spending probably in future years.
And I appreciate the reserve line being added to the balance sheet. Thank you. Just shows the public that, you know, we're meeting our taper obligation and then some with our, you know, reserves.
Out of curiosity, what's the ninety-three dollar and seventy-three cent donation received? There's a ninety-three dollar and seventy-three cent donation on the revenue table. Is that just a random, someone gave us ninety-three dollars and seventy?
Money at the desk all the time, I.
I didn't know people did that.
All right, and they don't want to vote. The trouble of writing a check to the foundations.
Okay, fair enough. That's fine.
Three or four books, right?
Well, I assume when folks donate books that we then resell, we're not like actually cataloging that as a donation.
They left a hundred dollars in a book as a bookmark. Okay, so, um, I don't think we need to approve if anything, we're just commenting, I think it looks great. I like that.
Sorry, one more quick question. The personnel expenditures are quite a ways below kind of the estimate. Is that just because we effectively aren't, weren't fully staffed up at the beginning of the year?
It's the main reason, Andy, but I think we also, and we'll, we'll see until, uh, you know, next year, we were ballparking that generally about what the, uh, costs for benefits are going to be. And so we overestimated. For next year.
Okay, um, so the, uh, investment policy? Um, any comments about that?
So I, I think, um, the, the sort of high level on the investment policy is that we, we had, we had previously looked at, uh, an investment policy that was largely modeled on the Garfield County's investment policy. Um, because we just are required by law to have an investment policy in place. So that's what we had previously looked at. Um, we, um, we sort of did two things based on the discussion that we had at the last meeting. Um, one is that, you know, like the audit, my understanding is that we are required to have an investment policy in place, a new one by the end of July. So we wanted to put something in front of you all that we could vote on tonight and that would, um, you know, sort of get us what we need to have in place in terms of just like a rough outline of, of what's required under the law. So that's what I sent you all yesterday. I think we sent, I sent a shortened version that just had really the basics that needs.
The line will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Um, so the, so the shortened version just covers basics. And I mean, and, and the really, as I understand it, the important pieces are the, the types of investments that we can put our money in, which is, I think, section, and I should have this in front of me and I do not, um, which is section, uh, two, A. And then another key piece of this that we have to have is the delegation of authority piece, um, in section three. Um, and then, uh, the other, uh, so I mean, honestly, primarily like one, two and three are, are what we need to have in place. There's a couple of other things that need to be in there. Um, the, the clean short version that I sent you yesterday, just as the pieces that we really need to have in a, in a clean format. Um, and then our sense from the discussion with, at the last meeting is that it would probably be a good idea to have a sort of more wholesome discussion as a board about how we want to approach investments going forward from an actual strategic perspective. Um, and so that's where I think we didn't want to make a lot of revisions to the investment policy before we had had that discussion and agreed how we wanted to proceed with that piece of this. So I think we decided, Sam and I, you know, in our meeting with Jennifer, we decided to, to put in front of you all something that's, you know, clean and basic and covers us from a legal perspective. And, and, you know, it says that we're going to exercise prudence in, you know, our management of, of public funding. Um, but that, you know, in terms of having a more nuanced discussion of our investment policy going forward, we wanted to bring all that to the board, um, and not, you know, sort of make those decisions just as a finance up committee.
Just to confirm your ask is that we would approve attachment C as the interim policy? And it would be the effective policy and so we decide what additional details we want to add in the longer version?
It, so it would be the shorter, cleaner version that I sent yesterday that I would want to approve. It's a little bit different.
Yeah.
Okay, I know that I, who did you send the one yesterday to?
All the trustees, the link and the.
All right, I may have just missed it.
It's just a shortened.
By the way.
There's, there's nothing different about it than what's in the packet. It's just that there's a bunch of sections that I removed.
Yeah, I have your email. I just failed to read it.
That's, that's okay. But if you had read the policy before, that basically just, this just stops short of it.
So are we intending to look at the policy, the larger one tonight? Or is that something we want to think, look at and then bring back for discussion? I just want to make sure I'm understanding the timeline.
I mean, oh, sorry, go ahead, Kara.
So what I was going to say is that, um, our understanding is that most of the rest of the policy, um, that's, that was in front of us before that we had before, um, was pretty specific to Garfield County. So there's a lot of stuff in there that's just not going to be important, um, for us going forward. But what we decided was rather than, you know, create more language in our investment policy about how we want to manage our investments going forward, we thought we would put in place the pieces that were necessary. And then we could have a discussion about strategy and then draft, you know, the sort of more, if we want more language in the investment policy, if we want more actual direction and policy, if we want more of that in it, then we would want, we would create that ourselves on the basis of the, you know, positions and the, the str- strategy that we decided we want to pursue going forward.
So do you feel like the interim policy, like, is that, I mean, does that have everything in it that we would want? Or are, like, are there specific areas that you think that we would want to look at a little more closely?
I'm just pulling it up. The, um, so I think that the, the short version that I sent you all, you know, has the basics. I think the piece that we would need to look at a little bit more, or I think the piece that I got the sense that the board wanted to look at more closely is, is sort of the idea of, are there other restrictions that we put, we want to put on the money? You know, the, um, you know, if you look at right now, I think the bones are all there right now, um, in the short version that I shared. I think the, the question is whether we want to change our approach to investing. So for example.
Closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Just to add to that, you, you know, Andy had brought up, um, the risk, uh, associated with sort of all our eggs in the Colorado Trust basket. And so we talked a little about that at Finance Committee. Um, and maybe, so we're, we're considering, um, the return, the risk and the liquidity. Um, so we have that conversation about Colorado Trust, everything in there. Or do we look at, uh, mitigating the risk? How big is that risk? And then I think, do we want to add a fourth consideration? And then I think, do we want to add a fourth consideration, which. Sort of goes by E S G often, environmental sustainable governance, you know, socially screened investments. Um. That's just something that may come back to the board from the community at some point and. Do we, do we care to address that now, or do we want to cross that bridge if we come to it? So there's, in my mind, there's sort of four things. Is that, is that capture our discussion, Kara?
Yeah, I think, I think that's right. I mean, I think, like I said, I think what's in there now in the short version would be fine going forward in the near term. I think. There's bigger questions though that have been raised about, you know, do we want to make sure that the money is, you know. You know, do we want to emphasize return, or do we want to emphasize the safety of the money? Do we want to invest with Colorado Trust? Do we want to invest with something else? We want to invest with lots of banks? Do we want to keep the money in regular, you know, interest-bearing load, like bank accounts? I think there's some. Strategy questions that have been raised in this group that were not part of the draft that we had before, um, which was based on sort of a, a different library districts. Investment policy. So I think that there's, there, I think what's in there now is fairly straightforward and we could theoretically just follow that, but it seems like there were. Bigger picture questions that folks on the board wanted to discuss and we wanted to make sure that the strategy going forward reflected what this board wants to do going forward.
I'm having trouble pulling a shorter version. So the version.
The shorter version is, I believe, is the version.
Separate version.
Is not the C.
It's not C, it's on the pocket.
It's. I didn't get anything in town. What I'm pulling up though, seems like it's the same version.
They're, they're very similar. Um, I got C from the packet that was sent out Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is here.
There's a separate.
Different than what's in the pocket that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Kara, the version you're referring to is the one, the three-page version you met out yesterday, which is also different from.
Oh, no.
There are three versions.
Oh, I think we need to timeout, but.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, well, I just think we'll have to push it. But um.
Need to have a policy placed by, you need to.
Oh, we have to have a policy.
They have a policy in place by the end of the month.
Okay.
Policy that Kara wrote, both, all three, but I'm not, all three of the policies that you have before you cover the minimum stake guidelines. It, it tells you what, things you can invest in and list all of the Colorado statutes that limit what, what you can do. And so each of the policies, the short version that Kara sent out.
Yeah.
Friday and C and the longer version that you looked at last year, all everything.
Yes, yeah, and I.
Yeah, the longer version is, is straight out of Garfield. It, they do. Uh, talk a lot, a lot of things that may remain not be necessary. Um. Yeah, I think, I think attachment C has, you know, it's, it's separate. There's a lot of things that are in there that are not necessary to a policy. The basic, the basic nuts and bolts of the policy are in Kara's short. If, so what you have to do is you have to, you have to delegate authority, you have to comply with the law, and there are limited number of investment tools that you have.
And we want to take a break and have, uh, have you print out that so you can.
From all three. Okay, I do have.
But not all of us do, so I.
Yeah, we can go copy it.
Yeah.
Because.
I'm sorry, to be clear, I'm just looking at these now. The version I sent you all yesterday is just a cleaned up version of attachment C. It's not that different.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay. It just takes out some of the comments and, but it just like cleaned it up.
Yeah, so, yeah, it removes a couple of sections.
Let's just take a, take a break and make a print, print it out and, and we're gonna.
Maybe, that's why I'm not seeing.
Stand again.
Library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we're gonna adjourn for five minutes. Are they?
I think purpose does have a, in, in the draft that Kara sent out, has additional language in, in just that first.
Yeah, and it cuts.
Okay, yeah.
Draft C, there's a section seven that does not exist at all in the most recent version of Kara's draft. It gets moved up. So, yeah, I mean, like it, there's some substantive differences.
Yeah, that's.
Just make sure we're reading the right version.
Okay, take a break, uh, go to the bathroom and then be back here in five minutes and we'll get uh. Somebody make copy of this.
So.
Okay.
Which version are we getting?
We're getting the shorter version that.
The most.
That, that Kara sent.
Most recently.
Okay, because I was.
Into the last line. At issuance, portfolio management, special legal representation.
I think that, that should probably be representation. Yeah, I didn't change that.
It's fine, I go.
All right. You ready? Yeah, I apologize that we had to do that. All right, let's reconvene. Okay, are we ready? Okay. Um, so now that we've got the shortened version, which is the, not in the packet, but will be posted online. Um, later, um. Are there any questions or comments on that?
On one B, is it prequalifying the financial institutions? Do we have some notion of a standard by which we wish to do that, or is, are we? Basically, what do we mean by prequalifying financial?
We're in like the same mindset. We have the same thing, like, we're like.
I mean, does this just mean we need to come up with a standard by which we would then pre-qualify a financial institution is? If we're going to hit the, I have no problem with the language. I just need to decide what it means.
I think it means that what was said back here is um, the library director. May engage the services of outside professionals subject to the availability. I would assume that that, and, and then there was somewhere written administrative procedures for the op. The library director shall establish written administrative procedures for operation of the district's investment program consistent with this policy. So I would assume the pre-qualification would take place in, as part of his. In this case, his uh, written administrative procedure for the operation of the district's. Would be my assumption.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's interesting. That was a discussion. You want, right, like some um. That was the time at which several banks had just gone, mid, mid-level banks had gone. Yep, uh, the day before and had good ratings. And so we basically just decided we didn't want any of this. Like, I mean, that was prequalifying. That, that was seen circumstantial, but that was the means by which I, I would assume. We would take the ratings, the institutions by independent. Or bond or companies that by, you know, standard import or somebody else that does. You know, above an A, uh, A to triple A and not do otherwise, but that's just an assumption. Um, so.
I took it to mean as the definition in seven. That, oh, that described below, I think got cut off in abbreviated version. Minimum credit, carry on.
I mean, this implies to me that there is some standard. By which we evaluate financial institutions, and I think the question is, do we devolve that standard to David? And it's simply on him to come up with these set of things he will consider and write it down, just then use that for the evaluation? Or is that something we as a board want to take on ourselves? I mean, yeah.
So I, I would say, I think that that. Question, it kind of goes to the, the bigger picture questions that I think we, we probably need to discuss. In terms of, you know, I think there's a lot of words in here that like, so for example, in A, one A, it says we, we're going to limit our investments to the safest types of securities. So like, who decides what's the safest? And so like I said, I think there's like. I feel like I keep using the word strategic and I don't think it's actually the right word, but there's like. More like a policy approach questions about investing the money that I think we need to make decisions about. And so I think. Once we've made decisions about some of that, then some of this might either change or get more fleshed out because, you know, if. We decide that we're going to take a really specific approach to how we're investing the money, then pre-qualifying would mean something different than if we're taking a more general. Approach of saying, we're going to, you know, get as much return as we can and, you know, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like, I think depending on how we approach kind of the bigger picture questions, those types of things will have to get fleshed out, but in different ways.
Can I just say what I think we should do? Um, you know, we, David has identified Colorado Trust as um, an entity that a lot of library districts invest, right, with and other governmental entities, right? They have a good return. It's liquid. If we go with their, I think it's called their prime. They have several different categories, but their prime only invests in government securities is my understanding. So. Um, we remove a lot of the E S G ethical investing. Concerns going that way. Andy has a concern about uh, all our eggs in one basket and the risk associated with that. We could decide. To just take a portion of our investable money and. Put it in, you know, CDs or something uh, at the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar FDIC insurance threshold to mitigate that risk. And we just pick a couple of credit unions and that might not be as liquid, but it would respond somewhat to your risk concern. So that's what I think we should do, but.
Yeah.
Putting it out there.
I like that I, can I make a comment just to base on that? My, when I read through this and, and taking any saying and concern, I, I have no problem with Colorado Trust. I think that's going to be fine. I mean. Um, I think as a board, it's going to be difficult for us to sort of parse this out in a meeting, like where we're putting. My recommendation is we set up a committee that just, I know, uh, well.
It's okay.
It, I, I mean, it's a better way to handle it and, and we'd need volunteer. If no one's going to volunteer to be on the committee. Um, then maybe we just hash it out here or have David give us a recommendation, but that just sort of. Because in my look at these things, I have four things, credit risk, interest rate risk, liquidity of funds. And yield. And so the, whoever's on the committee needs to balance those four things and come up with the balance of the, the um. Thing, that would be my, and then just to present that or just tell direct, or you know, with David, go ahead. Yeah.
Well, I had two, two thoughts. I mean, I, I guess to me, like, I feel like the finance committee should, should just be that committee.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, I don't know. I mean, everyone can tell me if I'm crazy, but I feel like there, we're counting on them to kind of be the experts in this for us right now. I mean, and then the second thing is, I guess, just practically for tonight, we have to pass a policy, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I guess we need to decide like, you know, um, what version of this are we going to pass tonight? And then maybe there are some other things that we need to kind of have on like a list that just says, these are the questions that have come up that we need to address, like Kara's kind of been uh, speaking to. I don't know.
Yeah, and, and I think we could post the finance committee meeting so that other members can participate, you know, who had, who want to give input on this.
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea.
I don't think we necessarily need a separate committee. Find out the finance committee to it, but it would be nice to maybe have a posted meeting, so.
Then you can go, yeah, and. Um, because to be, to be fair, uh, it just, this. It, it's hard to parse, and I think it's going to be hard to parse in a, in a regular meeting and. Um, you know, I, I was thinking the same thing. You could put some in CDs, you could put some with Chase, some with Colorado Trust. Turn it around and, you know, that, of all those things and, and you'd probably be good, so.
And I'm also not opposed to devolving some of this to David. I just want to make sure, you know, an auditor is going to show up at some point. And ask you how you pre-qualified Colorado Trust when you selected, then we're going to need to have an answer to that, or we're going to need to have an answer to that question if we go that route. So I just want to make sure if we, if this is the policy we're approving, let's not skip over what we're committing ourselves to and make sure we understand what that means.
Okay.
One other question. So we have a, in section three, there's the resonator, there's a reference to a finance manager, just for my own notification. Do we have a finance manager?
Adriana, I don't know, but Adriana, Adriana's office, so I live next to that.
Okay.
And before you leave. Section three, then, so there's this may elect to appoint as subcommittee, so maybe we could just designate the finance committee. Right, so the board, um.
Why don't we just say the Board of Trustees designates the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
And then I just have one little thing. Um, in section five, where it talks about ethics and conflicts of interest, we cite to the statute, but we also have our own bylaws, which has language about ethics and conflicts of interest. And I don't know if, it doesn't need to be like right this minute, but maybe when we finally have a final, final version, maybe we can also cite. To our own policy that, that imposes those requirements as well.
So how do you word that?
I would just add, so like how we have the site to the statute in parentheses at the end, I would also add, just like have the site to our bylaws without rewording anything, just noting that it's. It's there too.
Yeah, cite the bylaws.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
So, one other question I had real quick in section four, so the prudent section, last paragraph, the district seeks active rather than passive management of its portfolio assets. Is anyone opposed to just striking that sentence? I mean, I, the only reason I say it is because. I don't know that we actually do seek active rather than passive management. Like, that implies to me that we're trying to trade in a way that actually beats the market, which we're not. We're just gonna buy whatever the federal rate is, which is a.
Mm-hmm.
Arguably a passive investment strategy. I, I think we just removed the sentence. I don't think it necessarily adds anything one way or another, but it might bind us in a way that doesn't.
I think it, it bothered me a little bit too, so um, I, I think that's a good addition.
The second sentence doesn't bother you?
Uh. I, I, that doesn't bother me as much.
Okay.
I mean, it's a may.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I was reading that sentence as more of like a, like, I, I think I read that more as like a distinction between, like, we're putting it in a bank account and letting it. Get, get, build interest as opposed to active, where like we're investing the money. I just, I read it as a more general statement than something specific, but like you said, I don't think it's not. I don't think that concept isn't covered elsewhere, so I think we could probably.
Right, well, but it, it also, I think it says the opposite of what you think. It says we seek active, when we might just put it in the bank account.
All right, we'll strike it.
Right.
Yeah, we're striking it. Um. We have consensus on that.
That's fine.
Okay. Um. Any other comments on this or we'll move to a separate? I, I do have a question whether David knows what to do next, but we'll, we'll uh. Uh, we'll talk about that.
There's a separate bullet for that. We just need to get the policy out of the way first.
Yes, yeah. Um, all right, so um, if there's about any more comment, I'm going to move to um, adopt. The Boulder Library District Investment Policy that we have before us. Um. That it's not in the packet, but you understand the presence of the meeting tonight. Uh, with, with the changes that we discussed, so the changes being uh. Um, in section three. Special legal presentation should be special legal representation. In section three, again, we're designated the Finance Committee to monitor the district's investments with the policy. And in section five, we're citing to both the Colorado Code of Ethics and the District Bylaws Code of Ethics. And in, in section four, we're striking the first sentence. Third paragraph, the last paragraph of section four.
Second motion.
Okay, no discussion, all in favor?
Bye.
Bye. All, all opposed. Thank you. Thanks, Kara. All opposed, seeing none, the motion carries. And I don't know what you're going to do with this, but I guess you'll submit it to someone who needs to have an investment policy. Done by the thirty-first. Um, okay, so. I think now, I, I think we've discussed risks, collars, and I think. I think as a board, we're comfortable with the Finance Committee looking at the risk portfolio and, and working with David and I, I don't think you need to. I, I don't think you need to, I've, I am taking this as a direction that you don't need to come back to the us and say, we're going to make certain investments. You can work with David. David can do those. Or David can recommend them to you guys and you get to look at them.
Unless we need the resolution.
Unless it's outside the policy.
Well, unless we need like the resolution of the Colorado.
That's next. That's next. Yeah. So I just wanted to, so David, do you understand our direction then? Okay. Thank you. I, some, since there's a lot of people talking and different comments.
Very different. Nice job. Thank you.
Uh, make sure that we're clear about what David authorized to do and okay, so this last thing is another investment is, would be authorizing the district to, uh, we need a formal authorization to, uh, to participate in the Colorado Trust and we need to submit that with Colorado Trust before they can set up our account. So does anyone have any comments about participating in Colorado Trust? Before we take up a motion.
So this is basically going to be, you would put all of the non-immediately operational funds into this?
Well, I think I, I, as I understood this resolution, it was just authorizing our participation. Not necessarily saying we're all in or, or even which product they offer we're in. This is just saying we're going to participate.
Yeah. And then the three of them can get together and determine based on the criteria in the policy, which investments they want to manage risk. You know, and I think that, I think that one of the overall things is as, as a board is all of these are very secure and very trust. And to the extent that any of them have problems, it's likely that they will all have problems. Maybe, maybe not, but like if our bank being the largest bank in the universe as we know it, that has problems, then you know, other banks will have, also have problems. So.
I guess the only thing I, I would, I think drilled on it like, so we're, none of these are a risk, right? None of them are. So Colorado Trust has $16 billion in assets. Government entities, they've never taken a loss in forty some years of history. They've never, their, their clients have never taken a loss. So you know, there's, there's good things. That's not to say that we won't fail, but I mean, by continually saying, what if it fails? We keep saying, what if it fails? It sounds like every bank in the world is at risk. And so.
We've had some experience with that.
It doesn't sound terribly was, you know, the, that $16 billion dollars is in prime, right? So 90% of the money in Colorado Trust. Time, which is taking advantage of, you know, commercial paper, government securities, debt, like, you know, that's what you're, that's what we're buying, but is that, you know, because we could put, and so you earned it, you earn a point higher, right? You earn a point higher than what you were earning if you just have it in a normal account at J P Morgan. So there's some risk involved, but there's some reward, right? So do you want to put it all with thing to get the one extra point? Cause the one extra point on $10 million is not insignificant. But would you rather, would, that's a board, do you feel more comfortable if we were to, we just balance it all out? No matter what the, you know, one point's not that much. I mean, you look $173,000 for, you know, that's not all of the interest we've earned this year, but like, it's not, it sounds, if, if it was me, it would be like huge money. It, but for the, it's like the difference between 170 and 125, do you care?
I think, I think what we're saying is that's just something that, that you guys can discuss and determine what you want to do. And so.
Yeah. The only thing I'd add, and I think for finance committee, you know, I'm comfortable having them be the ones that consider this. But yeah, I mean, I think the risk with Colorado Trust is not the risk of the underlying securities. Like the underlying securities are reasonably safe and it's the same risk we'd get buying through any other broker. The risk with Colorado Trust is if they as an organization screw up, these are co-mingled funds spread across a bunch of different securities that aren't in our name. And now it's, you know, for some bankruptcy court to effectively sort out how much money we get back. And just there's, there is no one who would swoop in in the event of a failure and bail us out, right? Now, to your point, this is a risk many other governments have chosen to take. It is probably not an unreasonable risk for us to take. But I don't want us to be surprised. I mean, God forbid that this happens, but like one day if we wake up and it turns out Colorado Trust is royally screwed up and lost track of everyone's funds and it's going to take a court six months to sort this out. We're not going to have any money in the interim. We just shouldn't say we never talked about that contingency. So.
We did.
If it's a risk we're willing to accept, I think that's fair. I think it's fair for the finance committee to consider that. I would just make the point, it's not just the securities that are the risk here. It's also the operational institution.
Yeah. And I, yeah, and you've been clear about that. Appreciate it.
Okay. So, um.
I also want to talk about ethical investing. I, I respect if other people don't, but I think that there are segments of the community that care about that. And that's why I like prime because it's mostly government securities, if not exclusively. So.
I think it's great.
So the motion now is just to approve us to enter into the contract. Basically, Colorado Trust would allow us to be a member of the trust.
I think there's a, the authorization is to authorize us to participate in Colorado Trust. So I'm going to move.
Just approve the resolution.
Is it in our packet? No.
I, I put it at your seat.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, upside. Okay. Um, I'm going to move to approve resolution number seven, six, seven, sixteen, twenty twenty-four A, which is authorizing us to participate in Colorado Trust. Colorado Trust. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, there is a Colorado Trust. Just for the record, what?
All right. Uh, all in favor?
David will be the contact person. Designated people are the.
Uh, and opposed? And while this motion passes and Andy, thank you for your comment. I think, I think as a generation, we've been through it, right?
Yeah, I do miss management for a living. Wrong not to write.
Yeah. And nothing's forever.
Okay. So, um, the final sort of normal business, uh, well, the final official item is to approve, approve the annual report. And this you've seen several times. You had comments on it. We, we believe we adopted those comments. So we'll turn it over to to David.
I mean, this is the last time you'll see it probably in this format. This was the format that we had turned the end into the city. We arranged it some based on your feedback. We eliminated a few pages. Based on your feedback, I should imagine next year it'll look totally different. But yeah, I, uh, as far as the year went, we've talked about that. At least we're still circus where it was before the pandemic. Mostly going by electronic circulation. Uh, nothing else is. Alright, so nothing else is back to the levels they were before the pandemic. Uh, but we're, we're, we're hoping to get there, you know, opening Nobo, opening Canyon Theater. We'll see. I haven't seen what those numbers like yet. We've watched for a couple of months, know what the numbers are, but I'm hoping to get that, drive that.
Can I ask a quick question? I thought branch, uh, visits were back.
Yeah, they're more or less where they were. Not, not a hundred percent. So branches, I think branches are probably about eighty, ninety percent of the work pandemic. And yeah, the main library still down. Yeah, you know, at the end of twenty twenty-three. So twenty twenty-four, I, I'd have to go back and look. And you know, I, I haven't looked at the numbers in a couple of months. So and you may be correct. I know, I, I think anecdotally it was, I know Meadows has reported being.
Yeah. I have said that to people, so I just want to make sure what I'm saying is accurate. And so I think I can say are close to or, or.
You definitely could say close to. Nobo is probably, you know, in, in several weeks, it's been open, rapidly closing in on beating its last year's numbers already this year. And I, I should admit Meadows had reached such a high level of business prior to the pandemic. Yeah, it was really popping. And I think they're busy now, but I, I don't know that they've actually got. In twenty nineteen.
Two Ms in programming, right?
The word is in programming. I, I think you're right.
Yeah. Okay. So the, not there. On page forty-one. So we forgot that, that twenty-three thousand spent on direct programming. Okay. So still need that. One thing I wondered about related to this, and I didn't mention it before. And I don't think we have it here. It's just to acknowledge the, the commission.
I do in my notes.
Do you?
I, I do acknowledge the commission and the work that they did.
Okay.
But aside from that, no, I don't really.
Which commission?
It's a library commission.
That predated the.
District.
It technically operated till.
parallel, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, did, you know, I mean, we transitioned out, but I just, just thinking like it would have, this would have like closed that. But I, it just occurred to me. I had never mentioned it before, but so.
Maybe you're open, you know?
Maybe just where you, the library staff extend a big thanks to these people you've, and
Yeah.
former library commission, you could just add that in on page thirty-one.
Maybe you could name them.
Yeah.
Beneath it to run.
Well, I mean, but the other people. The OGs.
Steven.
I saw him at the.
Oh, I thought he moved to Australia or whatever.
He was there on Saturday.
Okay, great.
Even for us? Yeah. So yeah. And, and then one of the things I wondered about, like the photos of the people, like these are real people, right? Like these are people, like, do we ever like say their names, print their names, acknowledge them by name?
Even know their names?
I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't tell you some. I, I knew some of them.
Well, but with our policy we just passed, do we actually have to name their names?
We do.
It's a public picking of photographs and videos.
We don't technically have to know.
Yeah, right. So I mean, but it's nice. It's a nice gesture.
Uh, the other side of that would be you may now want to include their names because now all of a sudden someone can Google them and get their photo.
That's a good point.
So it really depends on what the person is going for.
But they know their photo is going to be.
We have here. And with their photographs may be used.
Okay.
And if they say they don't want to, then we honor that, but that's not, it's pretty rare.
Okay. So no surprises. Anyway, so that would just, I've got my programming thing and then I forgot to mention the library commission before and I just thought about it. So if there's, if it could be added in, that'd be great. So I would move acceptance and.
Yeah, if we can make those changes and, and then accept and submit this. Um, I'll second that. All in favor? Hi, Kara?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make the changes and this too is due July, I think. We should mail it to, uh, Celia. We'll need to.
I'm interested to see what, what you guys come up with next year. Director update.
I don't have much. I, I apologize. I came back from vacation and family emergency and I was out there in another period of time. So I, um, I'm trying to catch up. We are down to our, you know, final few folks of hiring to fill up what we had planned on doing this year, which is a great feeling. Uh, I'm not sure we'll get, I, I assumed we would get most of the hires made by the end of July. I think that's probably, there's going to be a few that hang on into August. We have begun, you know, staff have begun putting together budget requests. So you'll be seeing a little glimpse of some of the things that may be coming down the line at your retreat, but we'll have a formal uh, presentation of a draft, the budget for you to look at. Uh, probably towards the end of September, uh, so that you can, you know, consider it and give us feedback in October. I hope at the retreat, you'll come with some ideas. You'll be seeing some of the ideas that staff have for, um, either expansion or filling in uh, gaps that we weren't aware of, uh, at the, at your August, uh, eleventh retreat. What am I forgetting? You know, they again, another story today in the Boulder Reporting Lab uh, on the, uh, the Community Connector Program that we started here this year. Uh, I, I, um, it's good. It's a great program. It's going well. I'm not sure the story was well managed. I, I don't know that we have, uh, put in place good enough, uh, direction and how we relate to the media. So if you see the story, uh, and you have questions, please feel free to relay them to me. You know, it kind of gets folded into the whole Canyon Theater, which is another program entirely, uh, and many people have been working on for more than a year to put that pilot together. So it's odd that the two stories are folded together and it seems confusing to me when you read it.
I thought the story was, was good. The, I thought the canyon thing was like a insert into there from like a different story.
There was an odd connection. Yeah.
I don't know.
Odd connection.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody from the, the, the connector was asked about.
Oh, they asked him about the.
A lot of the people involved in the program were asked about it. So it's just, uh,
Oh, I thought there was a little different. I thought the story was great.
It was good. Yeah. I, it, it was a fairly good piece. So, um, you know, we're working through some of those things as we grow and I think it'll all be fine. You will. Also, if you stop in, if you stop in the library or you talk to some of the staff, we've been contending with the problems with the the cooling system. So it's, it's not a traditional air conditioning system. There's no forced air. It's an evaporative cooling system, which is essentially a glorified swamp cooler. And so in periods of time where there is high humidity, which is what we've been experiencing for the past three weeks and high temperatures. It's a recipe for heated building and, and unfortunately there's not much we can do about it. When it gets to that point, the system can run all it wants. If the air inside the building is not cool enough from overnight intake, it cannot push when not, when the door is open, hot air, just more hot air, white or hot humid air pours in because typically the cool air would push it out, right? So the cool air would push out. So what it does at your home when you air condition it, the hot air doesn't come pouring in, the cool air pushes out it or keeps it at bay. And we have not had that really happening yet this year. So the building has become, um, uncomfortable for some of the staff, some of the areas of the building have become uncomfortable. And we put together a protocol this week for potential for closing certain areas of the, of the building in the event of being at temperatures above a certain amount for over an hour. Uh, so I think today was the first time we had to do it. Uh, and that was the cafe closed an hour early because of the temperature uh, was over eighty-six degrees for over an hour. So we closed.
I can't remember what the, the Cummins report identified the HVAC of this building as something we need to.
The boilers they did. They did not. I mean, they, they, I walked with them when we did the swamp cooler. It's a unique system. Uh, it's certainly not designed for, I mean, it is designed for a large building. And it's a pretty unique system that, uh, the library struggled with for a long period of time. When I first got here, we were struggling with it and then we kind of got ahead of it. And it was operational for about seven years. And I think part of the, I, I take full responsibility. I mean, part of the transition from the city, you know, that facilities transition wasn't entirely perfectly smooth. Uh, we had we had asked for an extended period of time. The I G A stipulated four months. Uh, we didn't. The contractor manages the swamp cooler. Didn't come over, right? They didn't, they didn't, you know, because the city didn't really, the city maintained it, but did not manage it. And we had a difficult time getting that contractor to actually service the thing. And so it was until late June, mid-June, before she actually, uh, came in, the company that came in and, uh, gave us access to be able to meet the company. I think, I, I think honestly, I mean, it's not fully true, but that, that was a partial, that was, that was a major fail because ordinarily we would have gotten ahead of it in the first, uh, heat time, we would have been ahead of it and stayed ahead of it then for the rest of the summer. But since we fell behind in June when it got hot, it just kept getting worse and worse and worse.
I, I will say as a, I used to be a air force engineer and maintained thousands of HVAC systems on a military base.
Like a mechanical engineer?
I was a base engineer, like a city planner for the air force.
Can you get it up there and?
No, I will say, the problem is that the, the systems aren't super designed to hit these extremes. super designed to hit these extremes, that like, it's not gonna get, um, we had evaporative coolers all over and in central Illinois, in Missouri, which is a pretty humid place, but when it gets super hot, it's just gonna struggle and um, I, and I, we've had some super hot days, I think, um, I don't know if there's anything, it could be, you know, some things that we need some maintenance stuff or whatever, but it's just they struggle at that, at that rate.
Do we have fans running, like, just, you know, air fans, and then, um, what's the person traffic, like, so when something closes, like the cafe closes, do you post signs or people just like?
Sign today, a tape today, I think that they closed an hour early, the patrons stayed, I mean, they all stayed, they just closed the doors an hour earlier than what they ordinarily would and put a, I'm sorry, sign up. Um, I hope we can avoid that mostly, I, you know, um. Yeah, so you will probably, we, we've asked, we've put out requests for consideration of a supplemental, um, separate supplemental, uh, air conditioning system that would be, oh, I don't know all the terms, it's some kind of switch system, like, well, they have a noble, so it is not a forced air, but a, a switched refrigerant system that can cool to specific areas and the cafe, the cafe, the bridge has been an issue for us always, and so looking at ways that we can mitigate force.
Yeah.
The, both the toll on the evaporative cooling system and to keep areas like the cafe and then subsequently in children's area, which has always been an issue for us, both with heating and. So the, the Cummings Report identified the boilers, uh, which we will probably have a proposal for either this year or next, uh, to, because they're nearing the end of life, the heating system here, but in conjunction with that, we may look at adding some supplemental, uh, air cooling system.
Yeah.
Well, I know it's a big concern for, for you and I just, the thermal comfort of our staff and patrons is paramount for, for me and I think for the board of trustees, so, yeah, and thank you for explaining it and dealing with it.
Yeah, I, I, uh, yeah, it's terrible, I, you know, I, I I don't have air conditioning at home, I don't, the only time I come in there is when I'm here, and so, um, or going into Target, uh, so, you know, I don't know, um, the main areas, the reading area, second floor, the first floor, I don't think they've ever been in any way bad, it really kind of stems from the cafe and the areas adjacent, so the children's area. In the children's area, we've had trouble heating forever, like, my entire time here, we we, there have been years where we, during a really bad cold spell, we roll out, uh, portable heaters throughout the children's area. And so it's something we need to fix, and it was not, um, I didn't consider it an immediate concern, but I think we're not gonna have fewer warm days that.
You're right.
Yeah, so it's like, um, yeah.
Well, like, you, you guys would be comfortable too, because I was sitting in Jennifer's office and it was not.
Our office is horrible, Jennifer, Jennifer never complains, and I don't, I, I just like, I have a window I can open up, I bought a neck fan, like, I thought that. Neck fans were great, I thought like, I gotta expand over one of those. And I haven't heard any complaints from, I don't know, your areas.
Yeah, we're okay.
Yeah.
Funds. I was here on Sunday for a workshop, there were like thirty five people in the preak room, it wasn't bad, I mean, you know, I mean, there were a couple of fans running and, you know, that kind of thing was.
I was in the cafe on Friday, it was hot, but like eighty three.
The cafe is the worst, you know, we are cooking food in there again and, you know.
Okay. I just wondered about like people traffic, you know, when you close something early, you know, I just wonder if people.
Sure, there are people, there, there are people who show, but we, we're not, we're, we're, we're gonna be extending the hours in cafe, we haven't done so yet, but we are extending the hours, but even when we extend them to four PM or three PM or whatever it is we're doing, there's people who show up at five and they're disappointed the cafe will be closed, it's, it's the deal. And I think that concludes my report, I'm happy to take any questions.
Right. Trustee matters, is that what I get?
Yeah, I know, it's trustee matter.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a, an email, uh, from a resident across from Novo, uh, were you able to respond to that or?
Yes.
I didn't see the response.
Yeah, I can forward you that, um, or I can send it to the trustee, um.
Yeah, could you forward?
Send it to the trustees, because I have the same question.
Okay, because Jennifer met with the city, um, and I believe the place where he indicated that Ballard should go was on HO, his HOA property? And then, um, there is a sign, a one-way sign on one side, and so we weren't sure, we asked him if you was, you know, wanted an additional sign on there, or, um, so I wrote back to him and, and said, you know, basically communicated what the city had told Jennifer, um, and, and then also asked, said about the sign, and, um, and then he wrote back. And, uh, we need ballards on the northeast corner. And, um, and then I asked him, could you, I asked him, could I meet with him or could, could, um, could you point out, I gave him a copy of the map, uh, that where exactly he believes that, and I haven't heard back from.
Well, thank you for handling that and.
So I hope, I hope, hopefully, if, if he writes back.
I did go and take pictures.
Okay.
I think this is, I'm sorry, I should have sent these around, but I think this is the northeast corner he's referring to, where it's basically where the bike racks and stuff there are, which.
Well, there's gonna be a playground.
Where they're, well, I charge you, it's even more the reason to maybe have ballards there.
Yeah, right.
But it is a flat transition right now from the road onto the area outside the acre space there.
So maybe something we look at, protecting.
Just the one way stuff is definitely all on HOA property, that's not even on the city's property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so once the construction begins from playground, actually, there will be race planters along that.
Okay, and maybe that'll serve this.
That will service that, yeah.
I would encourage, there, we have heard a lot of concerns from the neighbors, uh, individually, and I, I think, you know, as we get them, I, I prom, I have promised each of them that we're gonna be good neighbors, but we need to work with the HOA. All right, so we, we, if we are, we are caught in a position where we are responding to each individual, uh, tenants' concerns and doing and responding to them to do what is they ask, we may be offending another neighbor who's right there and was glad that that rock was finally gotten out of the way or whatever, like, so I I intend to go back to the HOA with, uh, Celine and talk to them about whatever their concerns are, the HOA president actually came to the party as well, was over the moon, uh, and super excited about the Novo, uh, project, and so I, I know there are concerned neighbors, um, I would caution us to, uh, you know, hear them out, but also then, uh, we have to be, you know, men of prudence as we respond, uh, to what it is they demand, because I don't want to upset their neighbor who didn't want that and is happy that it was finally gone, right, or, or that doesn't want something to be in that area, because it is a, a never-ending kind of cycle, and they most of the concerns that we're hearing right now are not coming from a group, but rather from individuals who, who do not don't represent themselves as anything other than an individual, and I'm not happy with this, um, and we would, you know, I, I think if the HOA wants some things, we'll be good neighbors, if they want seeds planted, they talk, there was talk at one point about trees, and I said, please go back to your HOA, there were no trees in the agreement that was done in the contract, there were no trees removed that they claimed to have been removed, that's, I, I don't know that that's even true. Um, but they would like to have trees now to match the landscaping of the library, and I'm happy to buy them six trees, if that's what the will of the HOA is, right? If the group there wants trees, then awesome, if, if it's one person's desire, then I'm not gonna do.
Yeah. Well, in this case, I, it was unclear exactly where he wanted the, the, uh, the ballards, but it sounds like it's gonna be taken care of with the, um, uh, when they start constructing the playground. That will likely be fenced off, and then we'll have planters there. Um.
And could you just copy in the future if there's response like that, can you copy the rest?
I can, if, I can, or I'll forward it to my response to the, the trustees.
For context, it would just be useful to have.
And Doug, just for the record, the play, playground is not fenced.
No, I know that, no, no, no.
There have been some neighbors who came.
Yes.
Three who came and requested a fence.
Right.
It was playground, that was not in the plan, and it was a big part of the conversation that we had with the community, uh, when we, when we did the playground construction, so it's not, I don't know that we're gonna put a fence there, we will evaluate the situation, we, again, from a safety perspective.
Yeah, no, no, I wasn't saying fence, it's, um, um, I'm sure the construction will be fence, that's what I was thinking, and then, the, um, and then when the playground is complete, there'll be a, there is, uh, some sort of planters that divide the, the road surface and the sidewalk from the playground area, you know, for protection from cars, basically, that's the biggest thing. Um, so, let me look at it, when, um, when you get it going and see what things are, I appreciate that.
Is that just one HOA?
There, there are more neighbors than in the HOA, but primary HOA is the one just north of the building, there are some tenants who own their own buildings, uh, to the west of us who are also, uh, into, have concerns.
It's a different HOA on the west side of thirteen than the east side, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
The west side is fancier. Basically.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
At least the apartments, yeah.
Um, any other trustee matters before, okay, go ahead.
Oh, just, just a question about volunteer hours, I was just thinking about that, when I seen about the annual report, but just wondered if we're, like, just the tracking of that is like, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing?
Of course, I know.
Oh, you mean as trustees?
Yeah, I mean.
So I'm getting emails, um, from Git Pulse, did I attend the trustee meeting, are you getting those?
No.
No.
I only get them when I don't attend.
No, I'm not getting anything.
Neither.
Okay.
You may be the only one set up to get.
I, I, I get them, so there's at least two of us.
Okay, so.
The question or a box that said you want to bother people each time and.
Oh, uh, okay.
But I've been putting in the hours for the meetings.
Okay.
For the meetings, not for any additional work they're doing.
But for the other trustees.
Might be, yeah, would you prefer to have, um, those extra emails?
Yeah, okay, just put like other things that we're doing, we could, the meetings and other things and other, like, Cara and I did a volunteer thing, we did the, the the youth, the children's, uh, immigration event.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
The citizens ceremony.
Yes.
How was for doing that?
That was really fun. It was really very fun.
You know how to enter your hours into Git Pulse?
I used to, okay, but I mean, I.
So for that, you would probably go in and.
Yeah.
But you would add an event, I think, for that.
I just don't think it's linked up to this, to the trustee email now, because it used to be on my other, you know, the commission.
Reach out to, uh, Sophia with the volunteer.
I, I just thought about it as related to volunteer hours and just to make sure that we're tracking what we're supposed to be doing.
No, I.
I also wondered about.
Have her put in all the individual meetings.
Yeah.
So, or I asked her to, and it looks like she did, so now I'm getting emails, but go ahead, sorry.
For yourself, for you.
Well, would you go to everyone if, if you signed, if it was going to the right email?
Okay.
But so, um, because it's just a, it's, it's publicly available on the volunteer page, it says library trustee meeting, and you click on it. So, all right, sorry, you have more?
Oh, I was just thinking about that, and then I was thinking about, oh, just North Boulder, um, and, and just wondering about like the city and, and David, if you're like hearing good things from the city, are they happy with the the branch and, you know, have they done their own visits there and, you know?
Another question, so that, um, the project management team obviously has, but I, I have not, I have, I haven't spoken to Nurya or Chris.
Oh. Yeah, or if, you know, we should reach out to them and they, they got their check and.
I will sign their check tomorrow.
Okay. Room roll and.
Half of it.
Yeah. Okay, that's, I just wondered about those things and just wondered if there's something we need to be doing there to just goodwill kind of stuff. That's it.
Okay, um, so we're gonna adopt, uh, the special meeting on August sixth, so just remember, our next, our next meeting is August sixth, and it'll be at Novo Library, so Sam, you can walk over there.
Thank you.
And also, we'll start a little bit early, um, it says six PM here, we need to, I think, uh, because we're gonna have the library foundation board of trustees as dinner guests beforehand, so we'll start the meeting at six, but, uh, we'll have to notice it for like five fifteen or something. And we'll eat before, um, so, I know you're coming up from Denver, so when you can get up there.
There when I get there.
Yeah.
And are they? Are they on the agenda too?
Um, Chris will speak during the regular meeting about the gala.
Okay.
So.
At least in our last foundation meeting, I think it was implied that if you're from the foundation, you don't necessarily have to stay for the entirety of the meeting, so.
Yeah.
They're still, but toward the beginning of the agenda.
Correct, yeah.
In case some of them don't want to sit there for three hours.
Yeah. That, into your.
That's five, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say five fifteen, and I'll send a reminder email, because we have an extra week, so two weeks off um, before our next meeting, and then, um, also noticing, uh, a retreat on August eleventh from, it'll be around nine to three, and that'll be in Gunbarrow, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special meetings for August sixth and August eleventh.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. And legal counsel update.
No updates.
All right. That was a, a action-packed meeting, but we, we got through it.
With the July thirtieth deadline for many things.
Everything. Um, so let's adjourn and.
Seven fifty seven.
Seven fifty seven, have a good evening. And we'll see you August sixth.
Are you familiar with the? This is Strategic Services, Slavatosh guys.
Oh, what is it?
It's the World War Two document that we gave to disruptors about how too slow Nazi advances and every time you suggest referring something to a committee. We might get a section eleven, like, three.
Listen, I want to be fully inclusive of everybody's opinions, everyone, uh, you know, individual capacities as trustees.
Is it, is it a document or is it?
Something, it's, it's a.
Document on how to.
Disrupt the Nazis.
If you're a disruptor, how to make life as difficult as possible for your own.
Okay.
Oh, you're gonna get more than me, but I, okay, this is saying about.
Pieces of like.
My intent was, you have to consider.
Okay.
The sign and data is on it, on both of those.
I don't want to create a lot of work. But honestly.
Oh, should I have printed that?
Yep, yep, and I'll just send there.
Oh.
Pull it out.
I am Andy.
I wanted, yeah, we just have to notify them by eleven AM.
Okay.
It's easiest to get, I think I would, I didn't.
And then I should be printing this, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the resolution that was approved.
Okay.
What is that? Two meetings ago.
Oh, okay.
I have to have these different costs.
Burden.
They get more, you know, corporate and self-markety as they come down. And I think both were doing better than the CDs.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I'm fine either way.
Notice that.
Hey, Andy.
That.
Maybe I'll get this.
And if we do the, the, we talked about some of those.
Okay, I know.
You know, like the door visits and all that stuff.
Annual report.
Yeah. You said you were interested in one of the things. Talk to David or. Call up with David about that.
Those things were like.
But then again, it's whole. Yeah, it'd be nice if there were to the dashboard view. Yeah. Yeah, right, yeah, because I'm sure someone is in.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the CNI is like an IT task, so I guess.
Would you rather have like.
Well, yeah, we should at least make the odds and see if.
Well, one is three on.
Yeah, right.
But it requires.
Up front.